Like to call the line County Board of County Commissioners. Today is Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, it's nine o'clock AM. Board of County Commissioners convene as other boards, members of this board. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Controlled District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Controlled District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or separately posted agenda. Note, this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Commissioner Jacobson is online and the rest of the Commissioners are in chambers. Invocation is going to be given by Thomas Woburn of Sweetwater Christian Fellowship. And please remain standing for Commissioner Casinelli will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. He's online. He's not online, then we will. We'll just move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to public participation and action we've taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time. Though maybe we turn to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record. And will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment?
Jeremy, everybody, Mike Beaton, City of Urington City Councilman. I just wanted to thank the Commission for signing off on our MOU to share some clerk services with our courts right now as we try to catch up on some backlog. That's going to be a gigantic help getting to share both that facility and some staff and some resources. So again, on behalf of the City of Urington, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none in the room, any online? Seeing none online, we'll move on to five for possible action review and adoption of the agenda. I believe the County Manager would like eleven I polled.
Yes.
And I want to move sixteen A to right away to the first first agenda item. And then we're going to go into a closed session around ten o'clock, whichever breaks quick on the agenda. Anybody else have anything that needs to be pulled? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room and none online. Will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda pulling item eleven I and moving sixteen forward as mentioned.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Let's go ahead and go to sixteen A. For possible action, select line counties nominee to fill vacancy for district thirty nine from the list of qualified candidates that was submitted by Nevada Assembly Minority Leader Hapen pursuant to NRS two one eight A dot two six oh four A. The selected nominee and the nominee selected by Douglas County will be considered for final appointment at a joint meeting of the Lyon County Commissioners and the Douglas County Commission. County Manager. Do you want to explain the process so that everybody on the board is familiar?
Yes, Adrian Haskin, Lion County Manager. So with the resignation of Assemblyman Gray, who took a position in Washington DC, there has to be a process to fill that assembly if there's going to be a special session or a session between then and the next election. In this case, the governor has announced that he intends to call a special session. And so the process works like this. The Assembly Minority Leader, in this case, submits a list of qualified applicants to the Boards of County Commissioners of the two counties that are part of that district. Each Board of County Commissioner Commissioners takes action on that list and picks a name from that list. In this case, there is only one name on that list. And then the two county commissions will meet and do a joint meeting which will take place on November sixth at one PM. And that individual will then be the individual that's selected at that meeting will then become the Assemblyman Gray.
Do we have any questions for the County Manager? Discussion. Okay. Well, we do have the applicant here in our chambers. Mister Blaine Osborne is the recommendation and he's at the podium. So if anybody has any questions? Nothing right now. Do you have anything that you just want to?
I'll keep it very brief. I just want to say thank you all for considering this. I know it's an unusual request. I appreciate Assemblyman Gray's service and his guidance to me through this process. He and I have worked very closely together in his legislative sessions. Appreciate the support from Minority Leader Greg Hapen. I think many of you know my story from when I ran previously. Born and raised in Gardinerville. I want you all to know though that feel comfortable that you're not losing any representation here in Lyon County. My commitment is to serve the entire Assembly District from Topaz to Silver Springs. So you all have my cell phone number. Again, really appreciate your consideration of this and I look forward to working with you all if approved. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? None in the room, none online. Bring it back to the board for motion.
I recommend that we select Blaine Osborne to as our nominee to fill the vacancy for Assembly District Thirty Nine.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Have a safe trip up to the lake.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving into six. Time certain. Time certainly nine o'clock AM for possible action. Recommend a course of action to the State Engineer in regards to application nine four five eight six through nine four five eight eight filed by Walker Basin Conservancy on July ninth, twenty twenty five to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of water rights claims on the East Walker River adjudicated in the Walker River Decree. Existing places of use are within Lyon County and the proposed place of use is within both Lyon and Mineral Counties and the Walker River Hydralic Hydrographic Basin. County Manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So similar to the an item that we heard at our last meeting. Conservancy has filed an application with the State Water Engineer. However, the Walker River Irrigation District has also filed a protest. So my recommendation would be to take a similar action at this time and recommend denial until that protest can be resolved.
Do we have any questions for County Manager? And the board. They all go to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none on the room, seeing none online. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to recommend engineer deny the applications. Nine four five eight six through nine four five eight eight filed by Walker Basin Conservancy in July ninth, on July ninth, twenty twenty five, to change the point of diversion, place and manner the use of water right planes of the East Walker River adjudicated in the Walker River Decree. The existing places of use are within Lyon County and the proposed place of use is within both Lyon and Mineral Counties in the Walker River Hydralit- Hydrolit- Hydrolit- Hydrographic, I'll get it right, basin. Additionally, the County Manager will send a letter to the State Engineer addressing our reasons for requesting denial of the application.
Do I have a second? Second. Well, a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye Day, second by Commissioner Casinelli. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Six B. Time certainly nine o'clock AM for presentation only. Update from the Boys and Girls Club of Mason Valley, Travis Crowder and Nick Beaton.
We promise our presentation will be significantly easier to pronounce.
Good morning, morning, good morning. Definitely appreciate the opportunity. We do want to say before we jump in that it's been a long time coming, I think, for us to just kind of update everybody and and let everybody know we're not asking for any money right now. So there you go. We start that off off the gate. That being said, we love this tagline. I got to tell you, so Boys and Girls Clubs of America nationwide, right? It's America Needs Club Kids. So as you can imagine, so does Nevada in particular, in particular, we rule Nevada. So this is kind of our I guess our approach, you're going to say year round, this is what you're going to hear a lot from us as an organization truly because we believe it, we know you guys believe it as well. But being that in our particular case, we represent the worlds with our Boys and Girls Clubs in this great state. This is something you're going to see a lot of, and I think you guys would agree that we'll rule Nevada does need club kids. So this is kind of what you're going to see kind of throughout us.
And so we also have a ton of club kids right now. We're serving fifteen hundred kids and teens annually across our six facilities. That currently works out to about a thousand active club members. So our membership year resets the first day of summer. We always run the first day of summer through the last day of school. And so we will build that active membership as we get through. So fifteen hundred was our our active member count by the end of the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year. Next slide. And that includes the four hundred and fifty that we're seeing every single day. We had a five year record high of daily attendance over the summer of three hundred and thirty kids and teens across the organization coming every day. Summer is that time of the year where kids want to just veg out at home and you know, hang out and whatnot. And so the fact that we were able to convince so many of them to come into the club every day was a good idea was fantastic. And we're also fully anticipating that number to be closer to five fifty by the end of the school year. Thanks to our partnership with Lyon County School District and the Twenty First Century Grant, our after school program is now free for the remainder of the school year. So whereas we were charging some nominal fees of about twenty five dollars a week per kid, after school is now completely free to any single family. And teens are always free year round at our organization. So we're expecting that number to bump up for sure as we head through the rest of the school year.
Here we go. Here's where we are. I mean, this gives you an idea of three of our Lyon County sites and our Mineral County site, but in terms of where our numbers are and where a lot of our concentration is. Some, you know, we we appreciate the year round support because I can tell you at different times we'll reach out to to different, you know, folks, including different members of of the commission when it comes to your respective areas. But yes, this kind of gives you an idea and I can tell you that at two of these sites for sure, Dayton and Silver Springs, we are capacity, capacity. In terms of what we have and what we what we work with, we could go with sites that are two to three times our size and still still make a dent. But this does give you an idea of where our numbers are coming from. These are the areas, these are our five key areas. These are the areas that we focus on within the walls of the club. So when the kids, when any of our kids come through the doors, these are the areas that they get to pick and choose from that are going on throughout the day. And as we like to say, they vote with their feet, right? So whether you're a teenager, whether you're a five or six year old, these are the different areas all throughout our organizations that we concentrate on on a daily basis.
And with that Twenty First Century Grant, we have a new program called Power Up. That's what we're calling it with the kids. It's called something else from the state level. We're trying to make it sound really exciting, which is an hour dedicated towards tutoring, homework assistance and educational programming. So kids and teens in our organization are getting that for a full hour. And then before that, in the morning in Silver Springs and Dayton, in the afternoon in Urington, because of the school schedule, they're also getting about forty five minutes of targeted program in the other four key areas where they're broken up with their age group. So that way the the drug and alcohol awareness a six year old may get is significantly different from what a sixteen year old may get.
Five key elements. We're keen on that first one. I think everybody would agree. One thing we are very fortunate about and we're very proud of is that within our organization, all throughout our sites, including Springs and Dayton here and Silver Springs and Hawthorne is consistency with our with our staff. A lot of our folks have been with us ten, fifteen, twenty years, right? And in the case of Springs and Dayton, especially on those ends, those those leadership roles have been in there for a long time. So in terms of those consistent faces and consistent programming, that is something we're very fortunate on. The kids really do love and enjoy going there. That last one, Nick touched on it, fun. When we do focus heavily on the education piece, we definitely want to bring fun into it because it is hard to convince a kid to come out, you know, let's let's extend school days and come hang out at the club and do homework all day. So we do bring that element of fun into it. And I think that at any moment, and as we get through this too, I think you you would be you know, you'd be pleasantly surprised, I think, if you popped into any one of the sites and see what goes on there.
All right. So where we are at right now is the Boys and Girls Club. Every single year, all of our members ages nine and up participate in what's called the National Youth Outcomes Initiative. And this is nationwide for Boys and Girls Clubs where they take about a twenty five minute survey, immediately followed by an ice cream party for those who completed it. And we ask them for their their honest opinion about our club across a lot of different areas. And this is what our kids think and what they told us this year. So the vast majority of them are feeling constantly supported and encouraged. A huge one for us on this one is as safety is obviously a gigantic priority for our club. Over ninety percent of them feel emotionally safe and ninety six percent of them feel completely safe from harm when they step into a Boys and Girls Club. The bullying and stay away areas that we see from our club are consistently about fifty percent of that from where kids spend the rest of their their day, whether that be at school or at a youth sports organization, et cetera. Kids feel safe when they're at the club. And then what our kids achieve, so this was a brand new one from Boys and Girls Clubs this year, where we actually got to see the outcomes of what we do here. It is one hundred percent scientifically proven that club kids get As and Bs more often than non-club kids. It's just built into what we do here. Year over year, our kids are better able to resolve conflict with themselves. They, one of the scores that we've seen super low over the last probably two to three years is our emotional intelligence scores. Kids don't know what they're feeling. They don't know how to deal with it. They don't know what's causing it, and therefore they don't know how to work with those emotions. And that usually ends up in a pretty negative reaction. Year over year, for the last two years, we've seen those numbers skyrocketing because of some of the programs that we're putting in. The majority of our club kids are getting active and fit five days a week. And one hundred percent of our kids through some school data and through what we're hearing from them are on track to graduate high school on time.
All right, the future. Excited for this. I think you guys will be too. I love this stuff. So this one, happy to say, very happy to say, it took a little bit of time. But very happy to say that on the twenty seventh, I do believe of this month is when we are finally turning over some dirt and getting this bad boy built. This is our Dayton Learning Center. This is for licensed childcare. Many of you know, our first licensed childcare facility was was here in your, some of you are there for their for their ribbon cutting. Thank you. Yeah. And much like we dealt with when we built the one here, a lot of you were involved in that piece. And we envisioned the same exact thing is going to happen here, and that's meeting the need. The one thing we realized in our in our organization in the club, it's kind of tough, right? When you're dealing with families that are coming through the doors, it's not like all the families in need are just six and older, five and older and already in school. You have a lot of families that also have the little ones and perhaps it was kind of hard being able to only address one piece of it, number one. The second one was, and as you guys know, was coming on the heels of COVID. So many of the mom and pops, right, pulled it up. They couldn't withstand it. It was a difficult time. And in our case here, there was only two licensed daycares and they were maxed. So even before we built the one here in Urington, it was maxed out. It's been maxed out. We've had a waiting list the whole time. It's never ended. We could have built it twice the size and it would still be the case. Same can be said in Dayton. We know that there's not enough licensed childcare spots in the community. We want to help with it. So we got the funding. It's all in place. It's a beautiful facility. It will be right there on the same campus where our Boys and Girls Club site is in Dayton, and it'll be licensed for almost nearly seventy kiddos for from six weeks all the way to five years of age. So naturally, they'll be able to transition right into the Boys and Girls Club from that point forward. They're in Dayton as well. So be looking for that. You're going to see some walls going up and some dirt movement. It's going to be very exciting. Silver Springs. So Nick touched on the fact that we have a great relationship with the school district that we do, and we have for a long time. But as many of you know, and it doesn't come as a surprise, we, you know, working out of a multipurpose room in terms of the vast amount of kiddos that we have there, it is taxing. It's taxing both on our staff and it's taxing both on the families. So that being said, few years back, we purchased four acres of land that is right adjacent to the to the schools there, which is great for proximity, especially all of us at No Silver Springs. It's very spread out, right? So to have the property there is great. We're going to have to do things in phases. You know, because we don't, we're not sitting on millions. So what happens is we we've identified, and I think we all agree right now, the main thing is trying to get a Boys and Girls Club going first. Traditional sites, so we can get those kiddos out of the multipurpose rooms, right? And work with them. We have secured funding for half of the project and you'll notice everything's in phases. So when you're looking at it, you've got what you've got in front of you is the the dream and results. So you've got a Boys and Girls Club site, you've got an early learning center because they're going to need the daycare scenarios too, and then eventually a gymnasium. So we really could meet all the needs, not just of our club site, but also some of the needs in Silver Springs as a whole. So everything will come in phases. That first phase is the one that you're, we're currently working towards. We have a great relationship with our with our, at this point, our lead donor. And we're working very hard to secure the second half. As soon as that second half is secured, you'll start to see some movement there on what we believe will be a vital piece to what is needed in Silver Springs, and that's our own cloud.
It's probably going to be about a five million dollar project roughly from what we have laid out there. We're seeing upwards of eighty kids a day in Silver Springs, which as you can imagine, in the multipurpose room is a is a whole lot. And we're building towards the future. So we had a really big like pie in the sky vision for this building. And then the price tag came across and we went, okay, let's get more realistic with it. But it's still a very good sized building with dedicated teen space, a full kitchen and cafeteria, two program classrooms, a rec area, and then a limited outdoor space because we are being with us being adjacent to the schools, we know that we'll still have full access to that playground, turf field, et cetera. So we feel like we can comfortably do about a hundred and thirty five kids a day in the current layout we're planning.
And one more piece is, this is, this is a very important piece, you know, for not only for you guys to hear, but also for you guys to if anything comes about it, come our way. Both this site and our Dayton site is heavily, 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 heavily utilized from folks and employees that work on that parkway. And I mean heavily to the tune of like eighty percent of our families in Silver Springs, their parents work on that parkway, which, as you can imagine, puts a very, very heavy hit on us in our morning programs because they have to be to work so early. And in the same token, later in the evenings, they need us to be open.
We're open from six AM to six thirty PM.
Right. And you can see why. That is, we're talking parkway hours. It's proven to be a challenge, one that we're not giving up on, we're going to continue working on, but one that we see as skin of the game, right? There is some commitment, there's hope, there's all kinds of what we believe to be opportunity, even though it's taking some time to see some of that become a reality in projects like this because as much as Silver Springs needs it, so do those employers. You know, and and we look at it as we can work on this together, but we need some help here because we can't do it all on our own. And I think we would all agree. We're not going to be able to, as much as we would love to, it's going to be very taxing on Silver Springs to be able to come up in general with this. So we need help from others. So we throw that out there as a carrot that if those opportunities present themselves or folks that you come across that might help us in these efforts, it is something that we're desperately trying to get accomplished. Membership goals? More kids. I honestly, I mean, at the end of the day, we want to see more kids. We want to see more kids more often. We want more kids coming through these doors. And in order to do that, of course, these facilities become very important. But it goes without saying, and I'm going to do a shameless plug over my shoulder too, but I do want to say that we would not be here and we would not have what we have had it not been for these efforts. Because one thing we did fail to mention, but one thing that is very important, that site in Dayton that we that we talked about, all the great things that have gone on there. One big piece of that, right, was a handful of years back when the when some of the COVID relief funds came via this county to help us match the dollars that we got from the Pennington Foundation. So there's no question that, you know, we wouldn't be where we're at today without support from the county, which also includes the sheriff and his team too, you know, whether it be Night in the Country, whether it be some of our club events, whatever we have going on in the club, the County Sheriff's Department too, has been there every step of the way for us, and we appreciate that along with Andrew. I think it's questioned. Yeah, I'm going to shut up.
Do you have any questions? No. We'll start with Commissioner Hawkeye.
Yeah, my my comment is that there are very few organizations anywhere that can show the tremendous measurable results that the Boys and Girls Club does and that you are a definite tremendous asset to our Lyon County communities. So appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Casinelli.
Yeah, thank you guys for being here and being on that board, what, only about three years, I guess, was one of the, you know, things I'm most proud of in my time around here. But I got one question on the on the Silver Springs facility. Currently seventeen percent of the kiddos are in Silver Springs. Is it going to be possible for I know we're close to max in Dayton, is there, is that going to be an opportunity for overflow from Dayton to the Silver Springs facility? Or is that not something that?
I think when you see the community of Stagecoach and particularly when we get phone calls from parents and whatnot, it kind of depends on where they're going on any given day, right? So during the school year, we see that attendance rise so much in Silver Springs because they're going to school there. But those parents that are working maybe in Stagecoach are driving to Reno in Carson. So it's a lot easier to drop their kid off in our Dayton clubhouse and then drive back. So that's actually already happening where we'll have kids that are technically members of a couple of different clubhouses being able to go through there. And it's like the Field of Dreams thing, right? If you build it, they're going to come. And I think that having a more fully developed and furnished facility in Silver Springs is going to be able to help alleviate some of that. We see.
Yeah.
And I would think in the same notion too, it's a lot of why we had some funding, funding driven reasons too, but it's a lot of why we're also hopeful to see if there's space. Some of that happened with the Early Learning Center with it being built in Dayton. So many of our Silver Springs families are commuters, we know that. So we're also hoping that in terms of a licensed childcare piece too, that some of those kiddos will be seen in our Dayton site with that.
Makes sense, yeah. And and so happy to see that Early Learning Center coming along. Slow but sure, but and assures us we'll have a light there just about the time the Early Learning Center is finished, the light will be in there too. So traffic light, so.
And a big shout out to our site director, Randall Wilcox, and his team in Dayton. If you guys ever want to see a master class and classroom management and herding cats, that is the place to go and take some notes. They do a really good job with. I mean, we're seeing a hundred and eighty kids some days in the Dayton community and they do a really good job getting them going and learning and growing and managing that crowd.
And I think you guys would also appreciate the fact that pretty much every opportunity we have, we stay local. So when it comes to your contractor, your contractor is a Lyon County contractor, your subs are almost entirely Lyon County contractor. So just know that was a big emphasis too, that we wanted to keep things as local as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. The service that you guys provide is invaluable. And especially thank you for what you're doing to do in Silver Springs. It's so needed.
Absolutely. We're trying.
Yeah.
Commissioner Drakerson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen. Great presentation. Love the Boys and Girls Club for a lot of reasons, but thanks for all you do for the kids you serve and the peace of mind you provide our taxpaying parents and guardians. Just a real quick question. How many teens do you employ in those different areas? I might have missed that in your presentation, but I think that's another valuable piece that the Boys and Girls Club provide is a working opportunity for some of our kids and a resume builder.
Absolutely. So it's twofold. We have our more permanent teen staff. In our Urington clubhouse, we probably employ about five. There's three in Dayton. There's currently none in Silver Springs, but that's because they've stuck with the club as they've gone out. We formally had three there and as they've they've started going off to college and whatnot, they stayed employed at the club. And then we employ about two to three teens in Hawthorne. And that's just our like actual established teen staff. Over the summer, we run a program called Junior Staff, which is our workforce development program. Over the summer, we run a program called Junior Staff, which is our workforce development program. And that employs approximately an additional fifteen teens, along with partnering with Healthy Communities Coalition to get their Comstock workers into our clubhouses. And they're doing a lot more than just being on the floor. They're constantly evaluated by our staff. Uh they attend weekly staff meetings where they're learning about money management, how to write resumes and cover letters, et cetera. So all in all, you know, at our peak in the summer, we're employing probably thirty teens within our organization.
And that and that also is a good, it's kind of a neat deal, like is our movie theater. We we have a movie theater here in Urrington that is a great uh training opportunity. And so uh if you've ever gone to our movies here, uh and we appreciate the patience, these are young people learning. But uh we we do have our teens that fully run and operate the movie theater with the proceeds from that movie theater benefiting their teen center, so they go handy.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate it, bud.
So I have a couple of comments and a question. Uh one thing you you talked, you hit it on the early in the presentation about uh bullying and stuff like that, and you guys are so quick to solve those problems when it does happen. I mean, it's like I've had my grandchildren there, and it's spot on, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we put our staff through a whole lot of training and stuff like that. They're ready.
Yeah. Uh do you have to be a resident to to be uh Lyon County to be in the Boys and Girls Club?
Great question. Yeah, no, we're we're open to all. Um because on the flip side of where we have commuters that'll leave the county for work, there's also some that come in. And uh another big crossover we see is our friends in Western Nevada and us working hand in hand on some of those cross kids with the Dayton clubhouse and the the Boys and Girls Club that's located in Carson City.
The the reason why I bring that up is because economic development is very important for Lyon County.
Yes.
And this is a uh big part of it. Uh we're we're starting to do the I eighty corridor. They they say that uh not next year, but the year after that, they're gonna rebuild in that area. And I know for a fact that in, if you have a daycare, if you drop your kids off at daycare, because talking to the commissioners in in Washoe. Uh i- if you work out a uh trick, you're not allowed to use their daycare. Because it, they can't guarantee that you'll pick up your child because of the, it could be two hours waiting in that traffic, and that's why we're right now.
Hmm, right. Yep, and and we and and I appreciate you bringing that up. But one thing we will say with all due respect to the to the daycare that is out there too. Uh it's a fee-driven private deal, alright? And so the one that is out there, yes, it is available, but it it's substantially more than what Boys and Girls Clubs can provide and offer. And you are absolutely right. I mean, it it's a tricky deal getting out of there, so fierce.
Yeah.
Uh which we see, believe me. I cannot tell you the amount of late parents that we have in both ends of Dayton and Springs that we deal with as well, just simply getting there.
Well, we we've met with NDOT, and they say, well, there's not gonna be a problem, but I've never seen that happen before. Uh during construction of the next year, they're gonna be doing construction on I eighty. I have a feeling a lot of people, especially if they live in South Reno, are gonna be coming through Silver Springs on the backside and go wreck around. Instead of waiting three hours in traffic, it's better to drive for two hours the other way. So uh I just wanted to bring that up on your radar.
We'll happily take the increased membership.
And and as we get more development in the area, if people ask me if you know, how they can help in their thing, I'll definitely put your name out there, Phil.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. Any more questions? Thank you very much for.
Thank you for having us today. Appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to Commissioners' County Manager Reports. I'm gonna go ahead and start with you, Rob.
I'll just save my report for next time when I'm there.
Okay, we'll start with them on this side. Commissioner Hendricks.
Okay, I attended Smith Valley Days, um reopening at Fort Churchill Station. It's pretty interesting what they've done out there. Um the Fair and Rodeo Board Appreciation Dinner, the Comstock Historical District Commission Founder's Day. I attended uh the Planning Commission on Tuesday. And last night I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board Meeting. And we're working through the process right now of the application process to replace um Ed James, who's retiring at the end of the year. And um I have also applied for the National Association of Counties Rural Energy Academy Peer Exchange. Um the renewable energy is a kind of a, something I've gotten really involved in. And they're having an event in Oregon, and if I am accepted to that, this board won't have to, the county won't have to cover it. National NACO would pay those fees.
Fantastic. Commissioner Castanari.
Thank you, Chair. Uh met with representatives of the Winston-Salem Project and had an opportunity to discuss some of my concerns there. Um attended the grand reopening of Fort Churchill as well, and um they were closed for, I think, since twenty twenty-three, and they got some funding, government funding to redo their uh visitor center, and they've done a really good job putting the exhibits back together. And if you haven't been out to that park, uh it's looking really, really good out there. Uh attended Smith Valley Fund Days on Sunday, walked through and uh pretty impressed with the size of of that event. I think it was my first time at that event, so. Uh attended the mound house advisory board. Uh during my report, they wanted to uh express their thanks to our rail department and to the contractor uh regarding the the ceiling project and crack filling that's going on up there. They're they're pretty happy with uh with what's happening there. Attended the Kemper Board, and we approved an amended draft uh for the Transportation Improvement Plan. Uh attended the Silver City Advisory Board. And during my report there, we again expressed their objections to the naming of the Charles Kirk Building. Um attended the Lyon County Planning Commission. It was an interesting uh presentation from Jeff Sudich at the N N D A. And I had an opportunity to talk with the new chief from Central Lyon Fire, uh Tim McCord, and um looking forward to continuing conversations with with him on our uh wildland urban interface.
Commissioner.
Yes, I also uh was out at the Smith Valley Fund Days. Um turned out to be more of a Lyon County Commissioner Outreach Program. Um much all day Sunday, a lot of discussions with people, both uh positive and of course negative. Attended the Smith Valley Park Board, and we reviewed many of the um future projects. Uh also discussed those projects with with uh Mr. Foley on which projects would be good for construction funds. Attended the Walker River Elevation District Meeting, the Walker Basin Watershed Working Group uh meeting. After that one, it was several hours long. Actually, it was an all-day meeting, but I had the rig meeting first. That looks like it's gonna be uh a group similar to the Carson Basin um watershed group. And may, we may end up incorporating that into the Lyon County group of meetings, uh if they do get the working group going. Uh because they will be considering a lot of issues, grants and such for um the Walker River Basin area. Uh attended the Seroni Canal Annual Meeting and discussed possible projects for repairs and, of course, their assessment fees. Attended the Colony Ditch Annual Meeting. They did the same thing there, repair requirements and fees for the future year. The um combined Mason Valley and Smith Valley Conservation District Meeting, uh another long meeting there, discussing the consolidation of the two groups and possible no consolidation of the two groups. It's still an argument in process. Um took a field trip to um Desert Creek area. And first time I've ever watched drones spraying fields with herbicides. Uh it was amazing what they can do, and having two large drones spraying. One sprays a row while the other one's being charged and refilled, and as soon as it gets back, that one takes off. And they basically, in about a twelve-hour period, covered about three hundred acres of uh spraying for Medusa Head out there, which is the one area in Smith Valley that has a significant amount of Medusa Head, which is of course noxious weed and very invasive. So we're trying to knock that out before it spreads all over Smith Valley. And uh also attended the Local Emergency Planning Committee yesterday, so that's about all I did.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday. I'm kinda interested about those drones for mosquito abatement.
Uh they're good for just about everything. Um it's amazing. They can fly basically as a program, which is what they did out there with the acreage. Uh they just have them run, they just run about twenty feet off the ground. Uh the the cost was ten thousand dollars for the Conservation District. However, uh if you use a helicopter, it's fifteen thousand dollars. So it's a significant improvement in the cost. But uh also, uh it's a beautiful day. You could just see the the spray just kind of just go right down to the ground. And of course, there is a little bit of airflow because of the the drone. But I was quite amazed. I sat out there for a couple hours, and so it was, it was just really neat to watch.
So uh for my report, I kinda had a good, good couple of weeks, because I didn't have a lot of uh meetings that I had to do business at. And so I went to Smith Valley Days and enjoyed that, and I went to Founder's Day and enjoyed that. Uh I also attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board. Haven't been in there for a little while, so it was nice to drop in there. Uh attended the Planning Commission. And then uh lis- listened to the friendly city council last night, and they were pretty long. So uh that's all my report is. County Manager Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. I'll keep my remarks pretty brief this morning, but uh I know I touched on it last time, but really, again, my hat goes off to the Boys and Girls Club. They are really, a really important um organization in the community, and I really appreciate their presentation today. Um just so this board is aware, um you know, while we don't um have have money to contribute to that project at this time, um I did offer that if a grant opportunity came up, that it made sense for us to know and uh that we would be open to that. Uh so at least exploring it. So just wanna let you all know that. Um other than that, um had a really productive meeting with uh with N N I C regarding the Northline Power G I D. Um we were originally gonna bring it forward at this meeting, however, they had requested us to to take a look at bringing it forward at the November meeting. And so um we'll hopefully be doing that. Um we've got one more meeting scheduled with them between now and then, but uh making progress on that project. Um I also wanted to let the board know, um we have the date for the groundbreaking for the Dayton Government Complex, and I will be sending that out, um sending out a counter invite. But it will be November thirteenth at twelve thirty PM, so.
Twelve thirty?
Twelve thirty. So I will send that out and um probably today. With that, November thirteenth. And we'll be sending out information as well, uh you know, on Facebook and everything, so. That, once there are any questions at the board.
Is there speakers out there and stuff like that, maybe?
Well, yes.
Microphones?
Yes.
Yeah. Like we got some special guests that wanna come out there, so.
Uh you and I should talk then, so we can get that on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, that's end of number seven. We'll go to number eight, elected officials reports. Not all at once. Seeing none. Upon it officials reports. Yeah. And if I were to report. Seeing a trend here. Yeah, we'll go to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that that an item be taken from consent agenda discussed and act upon separately during this agenda, during this meeting. Do we have any comments from the board? Anything want to be polled? Seeing none. Do we have anything from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items eleven A through eleven Q, uh previously polled eleven I.
Second.
With a motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero.
And one, uh Commissioner Keller.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hockaday.
I I didn't notice that Commissioner Jacobson jumped in, but uh I just wanted to note that uh we did approve approximately seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grants at uh on this, in this consent agenda, which was phenomenal.
Any other comments before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, moving on to number twelve on the regular agenda, public hearing on climbing items, twelve A for possible action to prove the quest from B B C J Investors LLC for the abandonment of two one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square foot areas of the access easements for a portion of a cul-de-sac bulb at the south end of Evans Avenue as dedicated proposal map one four eight through one nine, together with abandonment of the seven point five public utility and drainage easement adjacent to the cul-de-sac bulb as shown on the Evans Avenue abandoned abandonment exhibit A one. And accept the right-of-way dedication for the extension of Evans Avenue as shown in the Evans Avenue Dedication Exhibit A one located at one twenty, one twenty-five, one thirty-five Evans Avenue in Dayton, A P N zero one six three six four two six, zero one six three six four two seven, and zero one six three eight one oh four, P L Z twenty twenty-five oh five nine, and Senior Planner, Lisa Nash.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. So we're here to talk about um the access easement and public utility uh abandonments and dedication of a right-of-way for Evans Avenue. The next slide. So the properties are located at one twenty, one twenty-five and one thirty-five Evans Avenue, which is located south of Lake Boulevard, as you can see there, which is directly south of the Dayton Valley Airport in Dayton. The abandonments and dedications of the existing road and the utility and drainage easements only affect the property shown on the plan, the three outlined in blue there. Evans Avenue currently extends into parcels twenty-six and twenty-seven. The two northern lots outlined in blue and ends in a cul-de-sac that actually hasn't been constructed yet. And then this application is abandoning the sides of the cul-de-sac of the bulb uh as shown on the following plans, and extends the right-of-way into the property to the south. So this is the reported parcel map currently that shows where that cul-de-sac ends. The two bottom lots are twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um Evans Avenue is intended to extend down to the property to the south, which we did a zone map amendment on a few months ago. You might remember seeing this. Okay, the next. So here are the abandonment exhibits. They have been reviewed by all the departments. They've already gone through engineering. We've made improvements, so this is the final set that's pretty much ready to record. Um these will be filed if they're approved by you. Abandonment exhibit A one on the left shows the abandonment details for Evans Avenue. So basically, you can see, we're taking the bulb sides off, making it straight down and realigning the public utility easements on that. And then dedication exhibit A one on the right shows the right-of-way dedication to extend Evans Avenue down and relocate the cul-de-sac onto the southern property. These abandonments are in no way going to negatively affect the existing properties. Um all of the property owners signed off on these abandonments and exhibits before we even started the process. And this will provide access to the property to the south. The cul-de-sac bulb, as I mentioned, hasn't been constructed yet on the existing um two lots. And the three lots affected here are still vacant at this point. So this one's pretty simple and straightforward. I am here for questions, as well as the applicant has another PowerPoint if you're interested, and is available online if you have any questions for them specifically.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Is is this parcel currently landlocked?
The app, yes, actually. It currently is, now that I think about it. There is a, an emergency access on the left side, if we go back. Um that property, coming down the left of the properties that are shown there is an emergency access to it, but there isn't an actual road access yet. So this does. So this does clean that up too.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Casanelli.
Thank you, Chair. Um, if I'm not mistaken, this, this parcel came before us. This is the one that was wanting to be annexed into the, uh, Dayton Utilities, correct?
Yes.
And, and did, uh, did we figure out how to annex them in? I'm assuming that.
They're working on that process. I don't believe it. Oh, it's good.
It is, okay.
Yes.
And, um, so we were talking about extending the road like five hundred feet, I think it was, right?
Yeah.
Um, is that gonna affect the utilities at all or the, the?
We're not touching the northern part of Evans, which is on the property that's developed. So there's no utilities extended down into the three properties that this right of way goes through right now. Um, it's a nice clean one because the road beyond kind of just the pavement ends just above the southern properties and the cul-de-sac, the utilities, nothing's been extended.
Engineer, okay. Thank you.
Well, and likely the southernmost property may get developed between, before the two to the north. So all the utilities and things would go in then prior to those and make their projects easier too.
Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, none online. Bring it back to the board for motion.
Based on findings A through D and subject to condition one, I move that the Board of County Commissioners approves the request from B B C J Investors LLC for the abandonment of two one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square foot areas of the access easements for a portion of the cul-de-sac bulb at the south end of Evan- Evans Avenue as dedicated per maps one four eight three one nine, together with the abandonment of the seven and a half foot public utility and drainage easement adjacent to the cul-de-sac bulb as shown on the Evans Avenue abandonment exhibit A one and accepts the right of way dedication for the extension of Evans Avenue as shown on the Evans Avenue dedication exhibit A one located at one twenty, one twenty-five and one thirty-five Evans Avenue in Dayton, A P Ns zero one six three six four two six, zero one six three six four two seven and zero one six three one dash zero four, P L Z twenty twenty-five zero five nine.
So, go to second, second. With a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Brings us to thirteen, thirteen A for possible action. Review the continued member, membership of Danielle Hasbrook, Brooke. As board member of the Central Lion County Park and Recreation Board pursuant to Article Three of the Advisory Board Bylaws and mine county code section three dot zero one dot oh four, due to her missing several meetings and the county not able to make contact with her and not having any contact with the park board or county staff after several attempts to contact her, board action may include, but is not limited to removal, suspension, reprimand, a correction period, uh, or no action. Close session may be held to consider character, alleged misconduct, professional competence and physical or mental health pursuant to N R S two four one oh three oh. County Manager Andrew Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So, uh, the central, the chair of the Central Lion, um, County Parks Board notified us that they had a member that hadn't attended in several meetings, um, and, uh, asked about the process. And so we reviewed the, the process and, um, that essentially they write us a letter and, um, then we bring it to the county commission for a final decision. Um, my understanding is that it's been over three meetings, uh, that they haven't, they haven't heard from Danielle's most, um. I know that county staff has tried to reach out and I know that they have tried to reach out as well. Uh, we did send a certified letter, not, noticing her of this meeting. Um, it was returned yesterday, actually, um, signed. So I know that she received, uh, notice of this meeting. So, um, certainly hate to remove people from, from a board, um, but, uh, we also have to have to have participation because it does affect the, our ability to get corners.
Any question from the board or comments?
Commissioner. Chair Keller, um, I'm not sure that I've been a part of something like this in my five years, but, uh, I think we just thank her for her service and, uh, we remove her. I, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room or online. Bring it back to this board for motion.
Um, I move that we remove Danielle Hasbrook as board member of the Central Lion County Park and Recreation Board pursuant to Article Three of the Advisory Board Bylaws and lying county code section three point oh one point oh four, due to her missing several meetings and not being able to make contact with her or having any contact with the park board or county staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thirteen B for possible action, acknowledge the resignation of Katie Baker from the Silver Springs Citizen Advisory Board. Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So, uh, this board appointed Katie Baker to the planning commission at the last meeting and so that her, she is resigning her position on the Silver Springs Advisory Board.
Any comment from the board? Did you have comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I'd like to thank her for her service on the advisory board. She did a really great job on that and thank her for moving up to the planning commission.
Do we have any public comment? Seeing none in the room or online, we'll bring it back for motion.
Move to acknowledge the resignation of Katie Baker from the Silver Springs Citizen Advisory Board.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Casanelli. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Yeah, it's ten o'clock. It's a good time for us to take a break. We're gonna go into a closed session, probably in your office. And so you guys can stay where you're at. We're just going to the office and then when we come back after taking a, a break.
Chair Keller?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, uh, Mr. Haskin, are you gonna just call me on my cell phone?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Hey, come back from closed session. It's ten sixteen. And it brings us to number fourteen, fourteen A for possible action, approves that line county personnel policy manual of proposed revisions. Mr. Foley.
Dash Foley, line county control for the record. I was hoping to, uh, postpone this till we have our new H R director in place, which would be November fourth, but there's a financial issue that's in here that the, uh, the district attorneys and the the justice of the peace will be affected by. So I figured I better bring it to you sooner than that. There are a handful of significant changes in here. Some of the others are just some uh, language changes or small definition changes, but I'll cover those and I'll answer any questions you may come across. We wanted to add a, uh, updated language for domestic violence and sexual assault leave so that we have that clear in the policy. Uh, we also, with artificial intelligence becoming more prevalent out there, we've wanted to put a policy in there for the board to consider as well and define that, put definitions in the back for artificial intelligence. We also are adding language for the board to consider that probationary periods can't be shortened. I can't tell you the number of times where I've had a supervisor come and say, we need to do disciplinary action on this employee. And I'll say, are they still in their probationary period? Well, they're in the first six months still, but I terminated their probation early because I wanted to give them kudos because how good they were doing. And then after I did that, now they're doing something that we don't agree with and we'd like to discipline. It's like, well, it's a lot easier in the probationary period to take care of that than it is post and, and work on those things. And so there, there's no, from a liability standpoint, there is no business reason why the county should ever shorten a probationary. We leave that as an ability for them. So we just wanted to clarify that policy so that, um, that's very clear for everyone going forward. In addition to that, the state added funding for the bailed hearings on weekends to pay stipends for holidays as well, not just the Saturday and Sundays. And so this policy proposal would add that language in as long as it's continued to be funded by the state and we have that language in there, that it'd be four hundred and fifty dollars per day that they would be available for a holiday on call for a holiday. And so that's four hundred and fifty dollars for the district attorney that shows up. That's four hundred and fifty dollars for the justice of the peace that shows up. The court clerks get paid their regular overtime rates under, um, our existing policies. So that's a clarification there. That would be effective immediately. So the next holiday that that would apply to would be, uh, Nevada Day holiday. The we would also be recommending eliminating the requirement for sick leave that it can't be used until there's currently it can't be used until they have six months of service. We have people that show up sick so that they can get paid and cause other people in the office to get sick. We recommend that that be changed. There are only two other counties that do that currently with that language and that is Churchill and Eureka County. All the rest of them have gone to where they can use it in the first six months with the exception of Story County, and they allow them to do it after sixty days. Our recommendation is we let them use what they've accrued and they start it during immediately on your stair walk.
Chair Keller?
Go ahead, Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, yeah, I have a, thank you, sir. I have a question for, for you, Mr. Foley. Let's say an employee quits or is no longer employed, quits or fired and has used some of that sick leave, um, before their probationary period ends, would we be withholding that day they may have taken sick out of their last paycheck?
So we will not be withholding any sick leave that we, that would be paid out on there that they validly qualified under the policy to take sick leave. If they had any that they hadn't used, we don't pay that out upon termination. Any sick leave ballots unless they've vested with us for ten years, and that wouldn't be the case for any of these first six months.
And if I love, Rob?
So if, so just let's say an employee works thirty days and they take four sick days in that the thirty, first thirty days, and then they decide to take another job or quit. We have to pay them for those sick days?
So we don't, we don't give them, allow them to use any sick leave until they've accrued it. They accrue uh, ten hours. It's a little over four hours per uh, pay period. So they're only.
Yeah, I, I think we're talking about different things, uh, um. But all right, I, 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 I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. And then we also put some language in just clarifying mileage reimbursement to, because that's a question we get on a regular basis. We put language in here, different topic, but mileage reimbursement. What qualifies for it and what doesn't? Uh, and those are the major changes that are in the policy and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. All right.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Hi, yeah. Thank you, Chairman Keller. Um, going through it, the only thing that I found were that there were some items missing. For instance, on page nineteen, on the table of contents, we're missing uh, one point six change of personal information. That's on page nineteen and skipped over that. Um, on page twenty-seven, uh, three point eight point four investigations. That was on page twenty-seven, but it's not listed on the table of contents. I have no problem with the, you know, going through. I went through about forty pages and said, wow, I bring it up because yes, you guys need to go through and make sure that your table of contents does indicate everything that's on each page so we can find it easily. That's the table of contents is for. But other than that, I think everything is, is good.
Awesome. I, we will definitely go through with the fine tooth comb. I appreciate you doing that for us too. And make sure the table of comment or contents has the appropriate things. It's a difficult document because it's gone through all sorts of different revisions over the years, different people adding, and some people add it in Word so that the table of contents grabs it. Some people over time have added something that wasn't set up properly in order to be grabbed into the table con- content. So we will work on that. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, bring it back for a motion.
Move to approve the line county personal policy manual with proposed revisions.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to utilities. Fifteen A for presentation, only a project update from the utilities engineer. Mr. Panda.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kishore Panda, utilities engineer. Uh, I'm going to present, uh, project update from the last quarter, uh, all the various projects we're doing in utilities department. Uh, here is a summary of all the projects right now, uh, in different stages. Now, there are four projects in the planning stage, uh, last quarter, we basically took two more studies, uh, which is listed number three and number four. These are the two legislation that are in very critical state with regards to their sustaining operations. So we brought two engineering companies to do a condition assessment and some sort of evaluation to, to overcome the current problems. Those two legislation are listed as legislation one, uh, that is next to the uh, Carson River and the second legislation is called industrial legislation, which is on the north side of the freeway, highway fifty. And we have two ongoing studies, uh, that's happening in Silver Spring, um, um. One of them is, uh, affluent disposal study, finding multiple, uh, disposal avenues, what things to be improved in the plant. We take care of the affluent, um, disposal of, from that plant. The second study we are doing, uh, disposal of, uh, existing slurs in those two ponds, uh, um, so basically these four studies are going on actively right now. We have two projects in the design phase, uh, one is Rose Peak Waterman Replacement. Uh, that's also in Dayton. Highway fifty Dayton Valley Road C O Replacement Project Phase Two. Um, that's happening, uh, next to the, the project uh, is in Dayton, next to the highway fifty, um. One project in construction, which is rolling a wastewater plant, uh, phase four expansion. So next few slides, I'll basically cover some of the details on each project. This is the study in Silver Spring. Uh, it has multiple components. There are four aspects we are covering here. Uh, the first one is evaluation of, uh, the existing infiltration capacity uh, in a soil, but basically it takes all the affluent from this plant. The second component is affluent disposal preliminary engineering report, uh, basically to look at the big picture, what are the alternatives we can, we can plan for, for affluent disposal, not only depending on this, uh, irrigation or the soil infiltration inside the airport. The third component is, uh, disinfection process that's inside the plant. Uh, the fourth component is filtration system evaluations. Um, there are different stages of completion, like number one, um. We have, we are going through some of the logistics in order to get access to the airport to do the geotechnical study, um. So we are kind of dealing with some of the regulatory and administrative aspects before we go there. The second component is, uh, evaluation of, uh, different uh, alternatives and capturing them in an engineering report, which has not started yet. The, the third one is the filtration system evaluation, which is already completed. We estimated about nine hundred seventy-two thousand dollars for the project for rehabbing the entire filter system. Uh, we are pursuing a capital improvement grant with the state. Uh, hopefully we'll get about sixty percent funding of that project. Uh, by end of November, they have a board meeting that we are attending. Hopefully in that board meeting, we'll be able to know if that application is approved for about sixty percent of that money. The fourth component is disinfection system. Again, uh, we reviewed the tech memo, the final tech, uh, we have a lot of discussions on this system. We are expecting a technical memorandum soon and, uh, we'll basically complete the construction as soon as we finish this study. Uh, next study also in the silver spring. Uh, as you know, there are two ponds, almost twenty to eighty percent full in one of the pond. And both ponds, so one is completely full. So this study basically will find out between two options. One, if you can bring a contractor just to dewater the entire tank or we can build some facility for continued dewatering down the road. So that study already done, we are expecting the final tech memo, uh hopefully within next couple of weeks. Um, the recommendation was to bring a contractor to do the dewatering one time. Then think about in the future how we can manage what are the best option for the plant. So with that, take my but completed within next few weeks. Uh, we are planning to bring a contractor to do the dewatering in spring of next year. Um. Next study is lift station one. Um, as you can see, the lift station is next to the river. Uh, this is a critical lift station from two angles. This lift station basically takes care of all the flow coming from mound house. Um, there are a couple of lift stations in Santa Maria. Uh, also there is a Carson River East End. So all these lift stations, they pump to lift station one, which is just next to the river. And this lift station pumps to another pump uh lift station. So from that angle, this is a critical lift stations. It was built in nineteen seventies, so which has not been gone through major repair or condition evaluation. So this study basically we are bringing an engineering company um to evaluate the conditions, including structural, mechanical, electrical aspects. So based on the recommendation, we'll move to either develop some projects to basically rehab the lift station. Next lift station is also critical, which is industrial lift station. As you can see, there are almost one um. Four major lift stations that are connected to one force man. And this was done during the recession time. So on the north of Highway fifty, if you see this industrial lift station, that's the last one is basically pumping all the to the plant. On the south of the river, this person two A is connected to the same force man with a combined force man or pipeline going to the plant. This makes a complex system because multiple lift stations when they're connected. It makes um performance weaknesses. There is some back and forth fight between the lift stations. Um, so what has been happening over the last few months, this industrial lift stations apparently not modified or updated for last twenty years. But with all those growths happening there. We are finding that lift station is very small to take care of the floor. What's happening? Multiple times we see some alarms. So we are sending overtime staff to manage that manually. Basically, they're playing with these three leg stations. Manage the flow over the particular over the weekends. So this study basically we're trying to find what we can do in the short term to manage this current situation so that we not spend so much time from staff. In the long term, maybe we can do some sort of master planning or some evaluation of the entire system, bring a capital project to fix this problem. So this study is basically done by another company, uh job engineering. So we have multiple meetings so far. So they're going to give us a recommended pump hopefully next couple of weeks. Then staff is going to take care of locating the form. Fixing at least improving the situation in the short term. Um, next two projects that are in the design.
Can I just stop you for just one second?
Sure.
Uh. How long until that? You're trying to do a study on that? How long on that study would it? How long would that study take?
The industrial study um was given three months. That has already been done and the engineer is basically going to tell us a spec for a pump that we can buy.
Okay.
The other legislation we just started last week. Uh, had a kickoff meeting. We brought the engineer, gave a tour of the facility. So that will provide this continue for next couple of months.
Thank you.
Rose Peak Waterman Replacement. Um. This is a pipeline project um on the grass avenue. It's about sixty eight hundred linear foot of pipe. It's going to replace the existing eighteenth line with a bigger size line. Um. We we have a contract with a a company called HDR in June of this year. We are a kickoff meeting in June. So right now, um because we have a funding for this project about one and a half million from EPA. We are going through all the regulatory reform and including the NEPA study and all this biological other evaluations for part of that study. And then we'll go for the EPA for grant application. So hopefully, if everything goes well, we're going to finish the thirty percent design by March of next year. And if we get the approval for the grant uh or the funding, so we start the construction in next summer. Uh. Next project also in the design, which is uh Highway fifty Dayton Valley Road CO replacement project phase two. Um, as you know, we bid the project this March. Um, we opened the bid in April. Uh, unfortunately, we just had one contractor bid the project because of there is a significant difference between the engineer's estimate and the bid amount. Board rejected that bid. So we went through the second bid advertisement, which happened last week. We're going to open the bid in November first week. Hopefully, we'll have multiple competitive bids and we can select one contractor. Our plan is to start the construction in spring of twenty twenty six. Um. By that time, hopefully, as I said, uh, we'll work through the grant application and secure the funding for this project.
What um? When is that bid date close on that?
It's November. I don't remember the exact date, but it's second week of November.
You were trying to do that spring of next year?
Yes.
Is most all that construction off the road? You're not closing the road or doing anything?
Most likely, yeah.
Cause I think highway is getting redone at that same time.
Will impact Dayton Valley Road to some extent for and impact access to that Sinclair gas station. Because we are blocking that entry from the Highway fifty side. We asked the gas station to give us a construction estimate, but they didn't offer that. So we have no other option than blocking county road, which is access from the Highway fifty side. Finish the construction as soon as possible within weeks and then open up for that business. But on the Highway fifty side, we we are not expecting any kind of slowdown or any road or meter something like that. So this project is under construction. As you know, this is in construction for the last over two years. Uh, ruling a plant expansion project. I have some financial updates, so. Out of uh about twenty four million dollar estimated budget, we have spent about eighteen million so far. Construction contract was nineteen about twenty million dollar. We have spent about seventeen million dollar. So proportionately, we can expect that we are almost eighty to eighty five percent completed the the project. Contingency fund within that twenty million, we have about one point eight million. Uh, it's a good news that we have only spent three hundred, about four hundred thousand dollars. We are strictly controlling the budget so that we stay focused in the scope, not burning any additional scope or any budget for this project. Um, the status, it was construction began in October twenty twenty three. It had a twenty four months contractual completion, which was supposed to be done by last month. Because of there are some supply and other issues, board approved a hundred fifty two days contract extension um with a final completion of March next year. So the progress so far is satisfactory. But recently what happened, the two reactors that was brought online, those are biological process. Within the five days observation period engineer and what we we basically noticed some issue with the system pop ones. So with discussing with contractor, they are bringing their sub manufacturer. They're taking that offline to investigate what's happening there. So this will bring some sort of disturbance to the biological process. Somehow we are trying to manage so that within next, hopefully a month or so. That problem will be taken care of by contractor. We can put it back to normal operation. Winter, as you know, is a is a difficult time to manage a biological process and hopefully by that time we can stabilize the process. We not have the further issue with the ball meter or affluent quality. Um, I have the list of changes. Um. What has been done to the project in my next pages? I think that completes my presentation for the last quarter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you one quick question on that uh? Dewatering the sledge pond in Silver Springs. You were talking about uh getting a contractor for that for now, but you we could in the future look toward building uh different uh a different way of accomplishing that. Oh, what's the cost difference? What what are you looking at? What is it usually for the contractor? Just to go in.
Uh, the preliminary estimate, what we discussed with the engineer is about a million dollar or above million for dewatering both ponds. It is a cost effective to go to a continuous dewatering process with is is called geosynthetic queue. But what happens in that process? Like Douglas County does, we put some filtering bags, put slots into the bag in an open area. Once this bag is full, the liquid will just go out. It becomes thicker and thicker. And at the end of let's a couple of months when the bag is full, you bring a truck and tear it off, take it to the landfill. From the cost perspective, that that is more attractive compared to the one time deal. But there is a land requirement that we don't have space to do that. Because we need to have two big pads, probably fifty by hundred feet. There is no room for that. So what we are thinking of, I talked to engineer last week that out of the two points, let's dewater one time. Open up one point for this facility. Use the second point just for storing. So from that second point, you pump to this continuous dewatering process in the future. So we are still discussing which is better for us. But for the dewatering by the contractor, I think it's going to be above million dollar.
So we we have land out there that waste management. Are we still on? Are they still using that land next to the thing? So as they bring their stuff online, that gives us more land?
There is a another excellent idea which engineer came to brought to me last week. That can we haul that slots from Silver Spring? Bring to rolling a plant. I know it's a hauling cost. But we have two machines in rolling air because one we brought for part of the rolling of phase four expansion. It's kind of a standby machine. So one can feed to the rolling equipment. We have the second machine we can use for silver spring. I thought that was a great idea. I mean, we don't have to spend million dollar, just follow slots slowly and take care of in Ruben get back. So I think that's the third option I probably should go for.
And I also uh wasn't there a maintenance issue on those sledge ponds that is one better than the other for keeping up with the maintenance because we ended up with the problem before?
Yeah, I'll say probably minimum maintenance. Once you leave the slots there. I don't think there is any maintenance requirement because that's basically a storage box. So we have not dewater probably more than I don't know, probably ten years. So one point is completely full, other one is forty percent empty. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We already handled sixteen A. Sixteen B for possible action discuss. Does anybody need a break? Sixteen B for possible action discuss discussion. Yeah. Discussion and recommendation regarding a letter transmitted provided by the Dayton Regional Citizen Advisory Board in which the DR cab approved forty zero to recommend the border commissioners wave costs associated with providing water to Dane Valley Park to include both the meter fee, water usage and water usage portions of the bill. County manager Andrew Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, mine county manager. Yes, sorry.
Chair Keller, um. If I may, per NRS two eight one eight point four two O for transparency and to enhance and maintain public trust. I wish to disclose a prior working relationship in a private capacity as principal of Casanova Landscaping and Construction. I have an agreement with the Dayton Valley Dog Park Board of Directors to provide lawn care for the park at no cost to the dog park. And although this agreement is a pro bono service, there are circumstances when my company may be called upon for services that may result in financial transactions. And therefore, due to the potential pecuniary interest with the applicant. A reasonable person may conclude that this is a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest. And I shall abstain from voting in this matter. The law does however provide for me to participate in the discussion, ask questions and provide knowledge and information on the subject that may not be otherwise available to this board. And unless you object, I will remain for the discussion.
Mister Wright. I don't want to get anybody on our board in trouble. And so I have a question about that.
Yes, Steve Wright, District Attorney.
Because when you're abstaining because of a peculiar interest, normally you would step down from the board because you would not influence the board. If you could influence the board into your direction because of that peculiar interest.
Understood. That's generally the case. I did discuss briefly with Mister Casanelli, but in this instance, my understanding is you just answer questions and provide input based on his interaction with the dog park. Uh, would advise that he be cautious if he's trying to persuade the board one way or the other. Uh, based on the action that the board may take and would recommend that he stay out of any of those discussions.
Happy with that. As long as the DA is happy, I don't want to get any of our board members in trouble. Mr. Uh, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, mine county manager. So this item comes to you. Um, it was an item. It was an issue that was raised by the Dayton Citizen Advisory Board. Um, it was on their agenda a while back. Um, there's a letter of transmittal here. Um, I guess there was a concern about the fees of the Dayton uh dog park. Um, for a little bit of background, when the dog park was created, um, there was an agreement. Uh, it's a verbal agreement that was not a written one, unfortunately. Um, had a commission meeting that um if the county were to let the dog dog park use county land, that they would take care of the maintenance and all of the um costs associated with that, including the water. Um. I I went back and tried to find meeting minutes. Um, the meeting minutes just said that the county board, uh, the board of commissioners approved the the dog park. I I spoke to the previous county manager who was here at that time. Um. And he had said, yeah, we had somebody new taking the the meeting minutes. So the minutes were pretty general at that point. Um, and that there was no agreement, but that um my understanding of the situation was correct and that they had agreed to do that and agreed to have a board. Um. A board to take that over. I don't know if anybody is from the dog park um is here and planning on giving a presentation. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. I don't see anybody. Um. So my, I mean, my recommendation at this time, some initially when this came forward, there was a concern about the meter fee that is um paid whether or not use water. And in the winter time, obviously, the water is off. Um, that meter fee is hold on. Fifty nine seventy a month. Um. And so the utilities department let them know that they could um actually turn the water off, have the utility department turn the water off. There's a one time fee. I think it's thirty dollars, thirty five dollars to turn it off and then thirty five dollars to turn it back on in the spring. Then they couldn't use the water, but they wouldn't be charged that meter fee and they would just be um charged um the water. So I mean, I think that's a. Um, the water. So I mean, I think that's a, that's a, um. A good process, um, if the board chooses, you could choose to waive that on and off fee, um. My recommendation would be to not waive the. The water usage fee on the park, um. Is a. It has just a li- little over one third of an acre of grass, um, I wouldn't pull the, actually, I had. The utilities department pull the, um. Utility bills for the last year, um, some of them were pretty substantial, um, looks like the the average throughout the years. It it varies by month, um. So I'm not going to do an average, but I mean, the highest was. Over six hundred dollars, uh, uh, for that month. Typically, July, August timeframe, um. It was about a hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water for for the month, which is was. Pretty substantial for, uh, one third of an acre. So my concern would be that if the. I have a few concerns on, uh, the county taking over that that responsibility one, um. Because it's coming out of Dayton Utilities, it's really the rate payers in Dayton that are taking on that cost, um. And I, you know, I have a hard time. Doing that, uh, or recommending that, uh. Um, the second thing is that if we are paying for the water. Um, you know, then we're going to have to kind of control what that that watering amount is. And being that we we don't do the maintenance on that part, there could be an issue there, um. Regarding the, we're asking. Everything else, so. That's that's my recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Hendricks.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it wouldn't be the county paying the water, it would be their neighbors paying the water. The rate pairs.
Well, essentially because the Dayton Utility Fund is a, it's an enterprise fund, so it's paid for by user fees.
Any other comment?
Uh, uh, yes, Chairman Keller. You know, I I don't think I have any problem with, um. The courtesy shutting their water off at the end of the watering season and. And they wouldn't be charged monthly when they are using water and then courtesy turning it back on when they need the water in the spring. Um, I don't see that as a. As a significant issue. Uh, but they're using a lot of water and the rate payers would be paying that, so in my opinion. I don't see where we could, uh, absorb that for the rate payers.
We have any other?
Yeah, Chairman Keller, um. Is this something that could be put on the ballot for the Dayton folks to actually vote on?
I don't know what would take to do that.
I think that the resources to. Put it on the ballot might be. Fairly significant, it might be. I I don't know.
It might cost them a lot of money and everything else when they could just pay for their water. So. I wanted to share a little bit, I sat on the parks board, uh, when this was approved in the first place. And there was a lot of discussion about it because, uh. For one thing, we we felt in, a lot of people felt. But, uh, to go a place for your dog to go out and get some exercise and everything else, we had plenty of places along the river. Plenty of places that'd be a land, plenty of other places not to put the staff. And, uh, create that dog park, but they wanted it. And it was under the understanding at that time that they would take care of it and would all be under their responsibility. So, uh. To me, it still stays that way. And so that's what I would support is that they go out, fundraise and take care of it. I would, I would support, uh. Us waving that fee for on and on for that thirty dollars. I don't think that's a big, uh, big, uh, thing. But I don't want to start taking on the maintenance of that park. Because if we're watering and paying for the water and everything, then we're going to send our staff out there to make sure that all the sprinkler heads and everything else and. We will be responsible for broken heads and things like that. So, and it's only a one use park, it's for. Dogs, not for weddings or. Other types of events. So that's where I. Stand on it. Any other comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Promotion.
I mean that we continue to have them pay for their own water, but we do waive the. Fee for turning the the water on and off each year.
Have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Four zero.
Four zero.
Sorry. Motion passes four zero. Casanelli was abstaining. Sixteen. Sixteen C. Propulsive action discussion and nomination of a potential board member to serve on Nevada Clean Energy Fund Board. And the manager Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So I received this letter from the Nevada Clean Energy Fund, um, that was attached in your packet. Um, they're seeking nominations, uh, my understanding based on the letter is that statute. Statute allows one of the members to be appointed, uh, by the governor from a list of nominees from the rural counties. Every county, uh, except Clark and Washoe. And so they're looking for nominees from, uh. From the counties. The deadline is November seventeenth, so we, um. Could hear this at our, uh, November, uh, sixth meeting as well, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, um. And, uh. And if there is a nominee, then we can, we can do that, that too.
Any discussion comments from the board? Is anybody wanting to be nominated?
Um, Chair Keller, I think it would be important for us to at least put a name forward, um. I would be interested in, um, having my name put forward unless there's other. Um. Commissioners interested, but I think, uh, having a voice on this would probably be a good thing for line county, no doubt about it.
Do we have anybody else interested?
I would be willing to do it, but if Rob would rather do it, that's fine with me.
And this is just a nomination, correct? This isn't a guaranteed.
And I would support either one of you to go because I think it's important to be part of it, every board, so, and be active on them. So it's up to. I'm I'm okay with either one, so. You guys want to hash it out or?
We're gonna. Do one appointment and one as a, as an alternate? I don't know.
Are we without alternates? No, no, so we don't even know.
So you're you're making a nomination. So I mean, I think technically you could nominate both and, um. The governor could, uh, could pick. It's ultimately the governor's choice or, um. Or the board can choose one.
It's a board comfortable with.
Well. Keep dominate both, I agree.
Well, this is a. A- action item, so we entertain a motion.
Move to nominate Commissioner Hendricks and Commissioner Jacobson. Uh, for a potential board member to serve on the Nevada Clean Energy Fund Board.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mister Ca- uh, Commissioner Casanelli, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Alright. Do we have any public comment? None in the room and none online. Okay, sixteen D for possible action authorized Commissioner Keller to travel Russian DC for the. NACO twenty twenty five Rural Action Caucus flying eighteen through the twentieth, twenty twenty five for an estimated cost of fifteen hundred dollars. I don't know if, uh. Did you send, uh, something over to Jacobson?
Say that again?
We have some late backup. So I don't know if you received it. We can talk about it, but, uh, I.
Andrew, if you'd just take a picture of it and send it to my phone, that'd be great.
You know, I'm going to actually ask Kayla Frost from A and H Insurance to kind of go over it. Uh, to work with me on it. And it's, it has to do with the funding of it. I. I'm requesting the fifteen hundred dollars to go to the event, but, uh, as I said before, I also tried to get other funding. So that, uh. To to help out with the cost of going to. To these things, uh, added. Backup. Has two different, uh. Two different, uh, travel things on there, but we're only looking at the one. I will request the second one to be on a future agenda item, but so we're only talking about the Rural Action Caucus flying. On your.
And Commissioner Jacobson, um, Mister Foley forwarded it to you, it'd be, you know.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning, uh, Kayla Frost, for the record, uh, with A and H Insurance. I am the insurance broker of how the county. Accesses the pool pack insurance and risk management program. Um, this past year, A and H has looked for ways that we can give back. Um, to the public entities that we serve. And one of the ways that we decided to move forward with that was to start our A and H Insurance Public Entity Grant Program. And we were at the NACO conference and Commissioner Keller was, uh, talking about some travel opportunities. I thought it was a a good map for the A and H Public Entity Grant Program. Um, so we were able to get funding approved, um, in the amount of, uh, purchasing. Covering one hundred percent of the travel expenses. Um, and covering five hundred dollars of the lodging expenses. For the twenty five Rural Action Caucus. And now we also have through the pool pack, uh, risk management and insurance program. There are additional risk management education grants available. Uh, to the tune of up to ten thousand dollars, uh, per year. And I thought that this opportunity could also fit for that grant funding. So I've gone ahead and completed the grant application on behalf of Commissioner Keller. To fund the remaining six hundred and fifty four dollars for this trip. Now that program, uh, through the pool is a reimbursement program. But I have spoken with the pool's risk manager, Marshall Smith, as well as Josh Foley. And I think we're all in agreement that there is a risk management aspect to this travel. And so for that remaining six hundred and fifty four dollars, I am hopeful that we can submit the grant application for reimbursement. Through the pool pack, uh, risk management education grant program.
Thank you, Kayla. Does anybody have any questions for Kayla?
Other than thank you.
You're welcome. I know it's a very small way to give back, uh, but we we want to do what we can.
So what I'm looking for is, uh. I think we have to approve it to the fifteen hundred and then we go back. And try to recoup. That's the proper way to do it.
Josh Foley, line county comptroller, I would recommend that that would be the process for you on that. I did reach out to Marshall this morning when I got the email from Kayla. She and I had some previous emails back and forth on this on. Whether this travel would apply or not, and she, I asked her to follow up and see what actually was available for risk management at those conferences. Uh, so I reached out to Marshall this morning, I haven't heard back from him, just to make sure. Not sure how often their risk management award group meets. And I don't know if they can do it retroactively if it's not in the next month, so I'm not sure exactly where that plays out and I. I'll follow up on that and see. Where that plays out. The other thing I want to highlight, just so. It's above board, no one thinks it has anything to do with this particular agenda item. I am on the board of Pool Impact. We currently have. Five hundred thousand dollars each that we do in grants to the different entities for risk management. This is a piece of that pool. We are sitting down together, I won't be here the second meeting in November because we're having a retreat. For that board to go over where we think we should go with the processes. I'm going to be recommending that we significantly. Look at reducing those grants because we have members that may pay less in premiums. For insurance than they receive in grants back. And I don't think that that is an ethical thing. I think it's better, especially since we're one of the larger entities that pays into Pool Impact. I'd rather us have our rates decreased. And then be giving it to other entities for some of these for the volume that we're doing. So just so you understand. Has nothing to do with this agenda, agenda item. I've had conversations for multiple years on this particular topic.
And you guys do that every year on, uh. Budget cycle or do you do it on a yearly cycle?
Every, every year on a fiscal year, we do five hundred thousand in grants. Or pool and five hundred thousand in grants for pack, or at least have a pool available for the, those.
So you guys have already done it to through the twenty five, twenty six cycle?
Uh, it's, so it's funded for twenty five, it is funded for this request, that is for twenty five, twenty six.
At a future. One that might not be there.
Potentially, and just so the board is also aware, we have traditionally used these grant dollars for. Training for liability purposes for HR department to go to investigations training. I do intend to. Put in applications for our new HR director and HR generalist to go to some training on that. The sheriff's office has used it multiple times in the past to do some of their different trainings as well. So it's not like we are not using these funds all the time. It's, we haven't put in this year yet for those things. Our HR director is coming on board. November fourth. And Sheriff's Office is using up his county funds before he dips into pool packed, uh, for this year.
Thank you. So what, is there any other questions? Anybody have any questions on this? I think I spoke.
I just. Specifically, my opinion, um, on our. Travel would be that. I appreciate all of us be wa- being willing to go to these events, but when we are doing it for the organizations. That we have been assigned to and their. Their stead, uh, I. Believe they should be paying for it and not the county. We. Do need to think about the, uh. Our our travel budget and. I definitely appreciate A and H stepping forward and possibly taking care of most of the fee on this. Uh, I still believe that Nevada Association of Counties should be paying for travel, for traveling for those type of organizations.
I agree with, uh, Chair Keller, I I agree with, uh, Commissioner Hawkeye, one hundred percent, um. Um, and, uh, obviously, uh, um. With A and H stepping up, I'll vote for this one, but, um. But again, we just have to be aware that we are, our purse strings are tight. Thank you.
So with that being said, uh, Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, um, I kind of disagree with that when, when. These, when we attend these things, we're not representing NACO, we're representing Lyon County. And as the third largest county in this state. Um, I feel like for us to have that voice is very critical. Um, if we don't have anyone there, then we don't have a voice.
Thank you. Uh. I wasn't going to read this stuff in or anything like that, but I I do want to bring it to everyone's attention, uh. This isn't just for. For me to go do something, uh. It's a learning thing for me too. I know that everybody that sits on a board. Boards aren't important until you sit on them. And then you sit on them, all of a sudden you could go through that learning curve. And you can learn from that board. And sitting on this board and sitting on NACO's board, I've learned a lot and I continue to learn, I can continue to train. I think it is beneficial to the county that I am a well-informed commissioner, someone that does the job. And doesn't sit up there and wait for something to happen to us, being proactive. I think it's important, uh. I'll just fight forever, but it it's the way I feel, uh, I I don't want to be a. Parasite in the county. To where I just sit here and collect a paycheck and wait for stuff to happen and whatever staff recommends, that's what I'm going to push through. I'm going to go out there, I'm going to get more information and help our, help our staff make their decisions moving forward. So that's why I think every time we get an opportunity. And I've worked hard to get these opportunities, these opportunities don't happen to everyone. This is the first rep. One that has ever been had, ever had. And there's going to be twenty-two people from the United States that were invited to that. And that's where we'll be talking to Congress and talking to the White House and they'll give me a heads up on some of the stuff that we got coming down the pipe. Uh, I know we're talking to USDA at the state level when everybody attended that. Uh, we talked to Alita uh. Her name's Benson, but it now is Cabellas. She got married. Uh, she's head of uh Nevada USDA, but we will be talking directly to the federal USDA. So to me, it's like, how do you connect the dots and help Lion County move forward with the knowledge? And so I, I would appreciate your support. And not only this one, but all. All times and I, I will help you guys if you guys want to move forward with stuff you want to do. I know you guys sit on like water boards. If you want to go do a water training, something like that, I'm going to support that because to me that knowledge is beneficial to Lion County and it doesn't put us in a. In a way that we're, we're not taking care of the county like we should be. So that's my two cents. So. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
We have to authorize Commissioner Keller to travel to Washington DC for the NACO twenty twenty-five Rural Action Caucus flying November eighteenth through twentieth. Twenty twenty-five for an estimated cost of fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh, second. Have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Cassinelli. Those in favor say aye.
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 Those against?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one with Commissioner Hawkeye Day against. Thank you.
Chairman Keller?
Yes.
Uh, I hate to do this, but I am running late for um. Uh. A meeting, so I've got to uh at eleven, ten or so um. Um, di- dismiss myself from the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson.
I have a good day, everybody, and again, I apologize.
And, and good luck with the, with the children there.
Yeah. It's a big day for our family, no doubt. See ya.
See you. For the record, we are down a board of four to zero. Four, four here. One missing. Sixteen C for possible action discussion, provide direction to county manager regarding administrative policies one through eight for travel policy. And one, one through ten, commissioner travel policy requested by Commissioner Hawkeye Day.
Okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Chairman Keller. Uh, in reviewing our travel policy one dash eight and one dash ten. Uh, they're pretty much redundant. Uh, there are several issues in each of these policies that. Are stated in both. Uh, my recommendation would be that we consolidate uh one dash ten down into one dash eight. And that would basically just be board travel policy. Because one dash ten is commissioner travel policy, which is the board. Though that being said, um, there are, as I said, several issues that can be deleted off of one, trans- transferred to the other. Uh, the other issue that uh most of us and what I've been harping on here. Is um. That. The, the travel to and from board and county commission meetings and travel to and from meetings that the board of commissioners has appointed a commissioner to participate in. Is part of the reason why. I make the arguments that I do. Um. Yes, we're all on different boards. We do make our, our travel plans to different meetings because of those boards. The actual board meeting is covered, but if I plan to. Have a position on that board, say the conservation district, if I wanted to run for the chairman of that board, I could. And then I would be looking at possibly travel to the Nevada Association of Conservation Districts or. To the Department of Agriculture to discuss. Different grants and things such that, that uh we might be able to get for. Any of the conservation districts or for the county itself. So I look at those organizations such as the Nevada Association of Counties, which we pay fifty thousand dollars a year in dues. That. If we are traveling for that specific organization because of a position we hold in that organization. They should pay for the travel. That's kind of where I stand on that. Um, you know, fifty thousand dollars dues is a lot of money and. When we then supplement with our travel um. From our account. We're basically paying double on a lot of these things. So I can appreciate going to these meetings and spending our time and bringing back that knowledge. To the board. But. I look at it as I, I travel to Elko, um, basically going up there. Uh, to request a pool pack and uh recon our medical for the jail because I inspect the jail. And I felt that it was necessary to go up there and discuss that with. Other commissioners in the state. Um, so that we could ensure that. These other counties also don't get sued for. Problems. But uh, that's where I'm coming from in this, so I definitely look at kind of. E- even though this, the policy says that we can discuss individually those trips. The commission always has that ability to approve or disapprove trips. Uh, I just want to put more emphasis on. Pushing that charge for. Our travel back to the. Different. Uh. Different agencies, districts or. Boards that we happen to sit on and request that they pay for travel when we travel for them, those, those specific boards.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Again, I don't, I don't think that's the way it really works. We don't work for them. They work for us. And. When we go to these events, we're not representing NACO. We're representing Lion County. And they, they're a major lobby group at the state level. And the influence that we can have on them and. Legislation moving forward at the state level and also on national NACO at the federal level. We've accomplished some really important things by serving on those steering committees. That have benefited not only Lion County, but all the counties in the state, and that won't happen if we're not there.
And I have a quick question. Why, why do we have that? There, there's probably a reason why we have two different policies, so I'd kind of like to know why.
I couldn't find a reason why there was two policies. I don't know, but I think it just. Somehow accidentally. There was two created, I.
In, in my opinion, they're both uh, they're both good. I mean, I, if there's a redundancy in there, I don't mind it being. Thing, but I don't want to change anything on it. To me, it's. So. So if you can combine them without changing anything. I'm supportive of that. But since we have this open. I want to uh. I have something I want to add to it. Because of every time we go through this process. So if we go to. The one dash ten. My county administrative processes and procedures. After the fifth bullet point or go to letter C. After the fifth bullet point. I would like to add three bullet points. Bullet point. One would be travel for the National Association of Counties Annual Conference. Bullet point two, travel for the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference. And bullet point three, travel for the National Association of Counties Western Interstate Region Conference. Like to put, put that into the. Into the policy. And that doesn't guarantee that everybody's gone or anything like that. I just wanted to have the same uh weight as what the annual conference has to. And that would have to be voted on, so I'm making that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion. Motion by Scott Keller. Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks.
Just, just. So I understand the motion um.
Just to travel, just for those three bullet points, and I have a copy that I can give to you.
And to combine the two policies?
You want to combine?
Yeah, to combine the two.
Okay. That. If you combine with, without changes, but to eliminate redundancy. And to add those three bullet points.
Do you repeat the three bullet points?
The three bullet points? So I have a motion on the table. And seconded it, those in favor say it.
Yeah, pu- uh, public comment.
Public comment.
Just a, a thought, Mary Ann T. Check um. State coach. I, it, through my career. I was, um, I, I went to different trainings. I went to different conferences. Um, and. That was a, um, something that was supported. Has, and something that I appreciated and I didn't go for personal gain. I went for um, being able to do my job better. I know that the county sends people um, for instance, the sheriff's department um. Often has on that, on, in, on the agenda, it shows where people have, have gone, what's been paid for, how, how much of the travel was. You guys thoroughly support. The employees of Lion County to do that. And I think that um, I, your job is, is. E- equally important, certainly if not more important, and I would like you guys to be the best that you can be. For the county. Um. I just think it's fair that if. If the county employees. Um. Get that consideration, then certainly the, the commissioners do, and I would support. Um, the commissioners being able to. Um, improve. Their job to be the best that they could be for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, seeing none online. Bring it back. We do have a motion.
A motion on those three bullet points being added. Do authorize travel for reimbursement? Has that, that's the motion. It's not on the overall. Consolidation.
It was on both.
You're adding. You're adding the three bullet points for authorizing travel. And then you're saying that. Cause at, at first you said you, you didn't know why we were combining it. Now are we asking to combine? So that this can be brought back. With that as an overall document being combined as a single document under one dash eight.
Yes, it's going to be combined.
Okay.
So, uh, Andrew Haskin, line county manager, um, for the record, I do need to clarify. So this agenda item is to provide direction to me to bring back a draft policy. Um. So I would recommend that the motion reflect that now um. And then, you know, like I said, I will bring it back for final approval um, once that is drafted. So just want to confirm.
Yeah. So, so my motion stands with providing direction to you. And then you will bring it back. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion before us. And seconded, those in favor say aye.
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 Those against?
Nay.
Passes three to one, bring it back. With those corrections. Okay, we're moving on to seven. Seventeen agenda requests. I do have an agenda request. I want to put on my agenda request. Let me find it. It's the one that I just. I'll find it while you guys look. Uh, do you guys have any agenda request?
No.
Okay, my agenda request is to have on the agenda for the twenty twenty-five Storytelling, Storytelling Symposium in Fall, Board of Directors Meeting for NACO. December fourth through the sixth, twenty twenty-five. That's another event, just like the. Real Action Caucus. What I want on the agenda. Cause the timeframes. And I can send you that information if you don't have it. Okay. No, I did that. Hang on.
Thank you.
Is there any commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation. Any public participation in the room? Online? We already have a closed session, so it is eleven twenty-three and we're adjourned.